Please like call the meeting to order. Everybody's finished standing and I think everybody with Lynn, but she's on one. You can eat quietly now.
I'll cry. I'll be with my mouth closed.
Alright, thank you. Board of Education of Lake County's meeting here at Hartz IV City. We're glad to be here. Most of you know, we traveled to all the schools throughout the year. This is kind of the opportunity to not only hear the presentations of the School Improvement Council, but also chances for us to visit, get those of the schools to think as we go around to something that we look forward to. I'm sure that the principal thinks and then looks at us coming in to visit on occasion. But we are going to be here. One thing I'd like to do to start off the meeting, just for those of you who may not know all board members. This is Rodney Rowdy Baker, as you may know him, but he's not very far off. He brought Rodney, one of our members. I'm Steve Briesley. Of course, this is Jeff Mickie, he's a superintendent of schools. Fred Curry, he's vice president of Board of Education. And Larry Wilkerson is a member of the Board of Education. He's next retired school administrator apparently, so Larry's been around a long time. I just love that one. I didn't mean that in a negative way. He loves experience. But we are glad to be here. What I'd like to do first of all is have the place believed in, so we want to have those that are in order to participate. Come maybe up here, we can see everybody. Well, we got Jessie Lovejoy. Where is Jessie? Come on up here Jessie, maybe right up here in front of us if you could.
Come on over here guys.
Right up this way somewhere. And then we got Grayne Lovejoy, good Grayne. Okay, he's coming. And Alyssa Work. I knew Alyssa was going to do something like her, she's all dressed up. Say goodbye to the ladies, please. We'll just follow your roles lead, okay?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And thank you all. We appreciate that. All the time, we're looking to see who's going to lead us. It makes it a lot easier when we have students, because they like to do it. One other thing that we're doing a little bit unusual, hitting the not hit for our board meetings, but I'd like to have everybody join with us to see just a moment of silence. We had a student at Hamlin PKA, eight, pass away here last year, Joshua Hammond. So if everyone will join with us in a moment of silence, would you please? Okay, thank you very much. Our group of symposiums, it's his family and his fellow students at Hamlin PKA, his staff there and all. It's really a traumatic thing to lose any student and we've all, over the years, probably had to deal with that one way or the other. But particularly the family members, and none of us can describe how that is for me. But we just wanted to take a moment to show our respect for the family of Joshua. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move into approval of the minutes of the September 3rd, 2015 meeting. Do you have a motion, please? Mr. Baker makes a motion, say goodbye, Mr. Wilkerson. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, alright. If anyone had wanted to address the board, typically the way this works, they sign their name on this pink sheet. I don't have any names here, so I'm assuming that there was no one that wanted to address the board. We're pretty lenient on that, so if anyone would still commit that, but if not, well, ahead to it. Okay, on the presentations, these are things that are pre-arranged that we're going to be on the agenda. We're going to have the School Improvement Council report from Hartz IV PKA. Ms. Tingas, you want to leave, we'll take that. Okay, we'll leave that down. You leave, we'll follow.
Okay.
We appreciate your having, Stengas.
I appreciate you all coming and listening to us. I appreciate also the staff and the parents and the students that are here tonight. Because they come out and they support us all the time and they provide the meal. I really don't have to do anything. They pretty much take care of it and do it all, except I didn't get the cake today.
Chicken and coffee. Mr. Limbo, thanks.
I do that if you choose. But you tell Tina that I'll have her a piece of cake Thursday.
I'm going to have to call that one. I don't know. You better not let him deliver it, I don't think.
Okay, what, for those of you that are parents and you're on the LSIC, every year we come before the board and every school in the county has to do this. And we provide to the board our test results, what we're doing to improve instruction and what our needs might be. So that's, tonight is our night. Usually Hartz is first on the agenda through the months and then everybody else is staggered, one, I think, each month. So, but most of this, most of you have already heard and know what we're talking about because you've been in our meetings and you know how I just tell you everything that's going on. So... Our Smarter Balance results. This is the number of students tested and the list of percent proficient for students in Hartz IV PKA. And the first on the list is ELA literacy. And it tells you the number of students which are, and this is not one, let me go up here and show you. This is the number of students, this is the percent proficient. And these are the grades. So in reading language arts, comparing ourselves to the rest of the state and the county, we didn't do too badly. We had a few low scores in fourth, sixth, and eighth. But third, fifth, and seventh were pretty much right with the state. I don't know if you know this or not, all scores in the state were down this year tremendously. They were pretty low. We're working to try to change that. Math, math is always our weakest. We had two percent in eighth grade. I told Bill a minute ago, I said, "That's really embarrassing." Because we do everything we possibly can to improve our math scores. One of these math scores comes from a teacher who was Marshall University Student Teacher of the Year. Everybody that comes in his school says she is dynamic. Just out of the box, she's wonderful, but yet she had a low test score.
And she the math teacher?
She is a math teacher, yes. She teaches fifth grade math. Fifth grade math at six percent at mastery. And I don't understand why it's like that. I went in, I did, the only time that I went in which students were testing this year was during eighth grade. Eighth grade, as you see, got two percent in math. I walked behind the students to make sure they were on task and I looked at the screen and I couldn't answer any of the math problems. And I'm good at math.
Let me ask you a question, Stengas. Do you all have a designated time of the day or amount of time that they had instruction in math?
There's an amount of time. Most of it, let's see, third, fourth, and fifth grade have seventy minutes. Sixth, seventh, and eighth have eighty minutes. Kindergarten, first, second have, they can have up to two hours in their schedule for math. Now, I know that the state board is looking at maybe increasing time for math. Because right now, reading language arts gets two hours.
That's what I wanted to ask my question, in comparison to reading language arts. There's more time to vote for that than there is math.
And I'm going to be looking at our schedule next year to see if there's any way possible that I can increase that amount of time for our third, fourth, and fifth. But it's our third, fourth, and fifth that are having only seventy minutes. Our sixth, seventh, and eighth have eighty and that's as much as they can get in a day.
Due to time constraints?
Due to time constraints and everything. That is it. And we already bank, we're going to school, sixth, seventh, and eighth is thirty minutes longer than what the state even requires. But you know that they've got to have their related arts, their PE, their social studies, their science, and all of that. And when you put those in blocks of time, all they get is eighty minutes.
Now, could the, are any of those departmentalized with one teacher teaching math?
Yes, yes.
What grades are those?
Third, fourth, and fifth are departmentalized.
Same math teacher for all three grades?
No, different math teachers.
Because there's a sharp decline, I mean, third and fourth grade are forty-four percent, thirty-one percent, and then drops off to six percent in the fifth grade.
Well, now, if you go back and you look at last year's scores, the fourth grade had low math scores as well. Now, that was a different test and you can't compare tests, but they had a low math score as well. So those kids moved on into fifth grade. But I'm telling you, this teacher is dynamic.
How long have you had that teacher?
This is her third year. And she, she does a wonderful job. But I, I think, I like what the state board says, I think that we need more time.
Well, I think...
But I don't know how to make more time within the constraints of all of the requirements that you have to get in.
Well, I know that there's also the issue with teachers that teach mathematics being in mathematics, certain, you know, that's going to college for that. But explain to me once again, I'm a little confused at the departmentalization. Now, the same teacher isn't teaching, like, do you have a math teacher that teaches math exclusively, doesn't teach anything else?
My third and fourth grade math teacher teaches math exclusively. She has them for seventy minutes during the day.
Then do the other third, fourth grade kids come to her like that today?
They come to her and they also go to a fourth grade language arts teacher, a third grade language arts teacher, and they go to a third and fourth grade social studies and science teacher. Because you have to teach those studies and science, third and fourth.
Okay, now, when does that pattern or method change? Like, you said...
Departmentalization.
Yes, the fifth grade has that one pattern.
Fifth grade is half, they spend half of the day with the math teacher, who also teaches science. And they spend the other half with the reading teacher, who also teaches social studies. Because you can integrate a lot of social studies and reading and a lot of them, math and the science. But now, if you'll look, that same fifth grade in REECA, they had thirty-four percent in reading.
Forty-one?
Forty-one. Forty-one percent, sorry.
And now, the seventh, eighth grade, how are they instructed?
Seventh and eighth grader are instructed, sixth, seventh, and eighth grader are instructed by certified teachers within that area that they're teaching. Except for math. Last year, I had two very new teachers who were certified in elementary. And they agreed to get into a math program and, so they could get on the permit.
Well, I understand. The same teachers teaching all those students, but you separate them from those?
Sixth, seventh, and eighth.
They weren't math certified now?
No, because they're getting their certification. Matter of fact, I think one took the math practice and may be fully certified now. I'm not mistaken. But she does, now, the people that have come, Risa and everybody else that comes and does walkthroughs through our building and watches our teachers teach, they tell me that there is a disconnect between what these children are scoring and what they're being taught and how they're being taught. And they don't understand why there's a disconnect. Even, Jeff has seen that himself. And we don't understand why.
Are you saying they're instructing one thing and being tested on something?
No, I'm saying the instruction is very high level. It's very, very good instruction. These teachers that we have here are, I would put them up against any teacher in the county. But I don't understand why our test scores are not higher, because they are such good teachers. And they're teaching what they're supposed to be teaching. And they're following the next generation standards and everything, but I don't have any, any explanation for it.
Ms. Tingas, you can also, I have looked at this year's SMI scores, but they don't correlate.
They don't correlate at all?
They show we have a higher percentage rate. Yeah, we still have a problem, but not as bad as these test scores show. They show a higher proficiency rate from our SMI scores last year. And we're just now getting those this year and I have, we don't have all those results to look at yet.
Did we have conversations about the math scores across the state?
Yeah, across the state.
Or is concern whether or not the standards align with the assessment?
Right. There's also concern that they're textbooks aligning with the standards. They don't.
Is there a program for mathematics, like either can, like a reading program for instance? Is there such a thing in math that we just... There are six programs out there. I mean, do you use that? Our adopted program is Carnegie. Now, is that, is conjunction with a textbook, which is some set of, with the textbook?
But it does not align with Common Core tests. So I'm going to talk about what we're going to do in math. Later on. But I'm, this, you're going to see this throughout your presentations in the county. You're going to see math scores being loved.
I know that, I've already seen them.
Yeah.
And that's the reason I'm asking these questions. Just like you, you know, we're trying to get, what can we do to...
What can we do to help it?
And if there are, if we're, if they're adopting and have adopted a math textbook that's not addressing standards, then that's maybe one of the places where we have to go and make sure we adopt a textbook that aligns with what we want to do.
I, I went online at the end of last year when I saw that eighth grade math and I knew we had to do something, because when I saw it, it just blew me away, it was so difficult. So I started researching, see if there was anything out there that might meet our needs. There is a program, Education Weekly, it is study. And it studied the top math textbooks and math programs that are out there to see how many aligns with Smarter Balance testing and the Common Core. And there is only one program that aligns with it. Everything else doesn't come close. So I asked Mr. Mickie if, if we could pilot that program this year in the county. It's called Eureka Math. And he said yes. I talked to the staff to get their buy-in and it's all free. You don't have to buy a textbook or anything. It's, it's every bit free, except for training videos. And because we were a, or a pilot program, they gave me those for free. So our teachers have jumped in without any training now and have started using this program.
Now, they use it along with the textbook or within the...
They, they are using the textbook and then supplementing with this Eureka Math. But what I would like to do is I'd like to move away completely from the textbook and use nothing but this if it shows an increase actually.
Well, and then, you know, you've kind of alluded to one of the issues here. At some point, the state is going to have to decide exactly what standards we're going to teach because there's still this, this agreement over, you know, the Common Core, right? And until that's done, it's kind of difficult for us to...
To do anything, yeah. I agree.
Okay, well, I'll let you...
But my presentation, when I presented this Eureka Math to the staff, I said, "Look at these scores. We've got to do something. If we sit back and do what we've always done, we're going to get this again. So let's at least try this." And, and they are trying it and from, from what they're telling me, they're saying that this goes way deeper than any of the textbooks that I've taught. And it is presenting math in different ways to them that even the teachers themselves said that they hadn't thought of. I mean, one teacher, my fifth grade teacher, she said, "They taught decimals using the hundreds chart." And she, she said, "I would have never thought of that." And I said, "Well, I wouldn't have either, you know, we use hundreds charts all the time, but not teach decimals." So she said that they presented that hundreds chart many different ways to them and then it'll pull back and expect them to do it themselves and then it comes back and revisits it. She's just really impressed with the program. And so are my sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers, but they say that what they're finding is that our students do not have the background knowledge. Where this is such a deeper math program, they're having to back up and use the Carnegie to lay like a foundation before they can go into it. Now, my third and fourth grade teachers and my other teachers on down through kindergarten, they are using it really, really a lot.
But they develop the foundation.
If we can lay that foundation, and I had Cheryl Workman here the other day and she was telling me, she said, "If you can show some game in your third and fourth grades," she said, "Then that should carry over as they move up the ladder." So we're doing, you know, we're, we're just grasping the straws out here trying to...
Well, maybe get ahead here, you may want to address some of y'all's plans and things.
Yeah, I got the, the Eureka Math in my presentation.
Stengas, can I say a couple of things?
Yes, you can, go right ahead.
They've got to understand that when they did this test, third and fourth was taught a lot different and they used calculators to do all of their math. They went cold turkey on the calculators last year. Not one calculator was brought, was brought in.
So did fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
That's what I'm saying. And Shayla and I sat down and we took the practice test for math. And I may be dumb about some things, but it made me feel really stupid. And I really think that the kids were just overwhelmed. It was a hard test. I even looked at it year before last and it is a hard test. And until you go back and you teach the kids the basics and how to get the basics and how to figure it out, you're not going to get the math on the Smarter Balance. Because they've got to know, they've got to know.
When you take a calculator away and they've been using it for everything and they're in seventh grade, they don't know the algorithms to even solve the problems.
So it's, it's like a beginning for the kids. And I mean, I'm just saying, in our defense, they would give us a prep to give the kids when we go in to sit down and take it at the computer, had nothing to do with the prep that we gave them. I mean, I'm not saying that we're perfect and that we're great and that was, and I won't use them there as an excuse. That's just some of the things that we faced when we actually sat down and took the test.
I understand, and I imagine this is not unique to just this school or this county.
No, it's not, it's not.
But we all need to try to find out exactly what it is, like some of the teachers are saying, that need to be done differently.
Well, you've got to know how many inches in a foot, then you've got to know how many feet in a yard. You've got to, and you can't have anything to figure that out. You've got to know it. When we all went to school, we had it, we knew it. I didn't use a calculator, okay? We had to know that stuff. They have to know it now. They've got to do it or they can't, I mean, they can't figure it out, it's hard.
Well, it gets back to what I say, if, at some point, those are, are going to establish what the curriculum in math or anything else is, they have to establish what it is so we all know the ground rules and we work towards them.
And we've got to have standards that match the test and textbooks that match the standards. For instance, we adopted a new English, not English, a new reading series this year. Well, it really wasn't new. All they, the same series we had last year, all they did was repack them with it. Same exact scores, same exact questions. They are, there's different levels called depth of knowledge. Their questions are at levels one and two. The test, their questions are at three and four. So, you know, it's, it's not matching nothing. We spent probably thousands of dollars purchasing those textbooks for our kindergarten through fifth grade students. And it's the exact same thing that we have.
Well, once again, the state is going to have to establish what the standards are and keep them intact and not change them every couple of years.
That's true, exactly.
That's what you got to say.
Time to then begin to address and do the proper tests. Go ahead.
But, you know, we're, we're looking for whatever we can do. I ordered books last year, I thought it was probably a little bit too late to the teachers. There is a, the group of people who wrote Eureka Math, wrote a program for the state of New York called Engage New York. You can go online and research it, you know, and they, they take all this stuff to a different level. They take it to the three and four level. So I ordered some books last year for that. But I didn't know about them and didn't get them into the teacher's hands for them to use long enough, I don't think, for it to have made a difference. But Kristy used the book and she says it's, it's really good and it goes more along...
Along with the test, but it's more balanced.
And Jackie McCann used the book and said that it was just like what, what they were tested on. So I'm hoping that this year they're using that as they go along and we'll even see an improvement in reading. Alright, our plans to improve student achievement in reading. We have an interventionist now hired through Title I and she works with three teachers every day. She goes in their room and or pulls out and addresses students' individual needs. We also have two Title I teachers and one Title I teacher sees my other three teachers in, this is grades K two, sees my other three teachers all during the day and pulls out and goes in as well. Whatever the needs of the kids are is what they do and they work with them on specific skills. We have another Title I teacher who works with third through fifth grade. And she does the exact same thing. And she works with small groups and it does co-teaching. And they, they have a very strong team. All of these, the interventions, the Title I teachers and the teachers that they service, they work real well together.
And they work with what grade then?
I have Title I and the interventionist works with grades K through two, which is six classrooms. And then I have a separate Title I teacher who works with grades three through five, which is six classrooms. She's working with six by herself, but they work together so well as a team, all of them, that she can do that and she can provide them their needs. We are doing REECA one eighty and... We are doing Read 180 in grades sixth, seventh, and eighth, and that's for students who are behind. And a lot of that is determined by our Scholastic reading inventory that we take. And just as somebody said, I think, uh, Belinda, our, we have a SRI Scholastic reading inventory and an SMI Scholastic math inventory. Those two inventories that we take, we take them three times a year. They show that our children are all gaining. Uh, they're, they are moving ahead, all of them, the day when we take the test. Uh, you know, in that, so, uh, we...
Do you think that's though, based on what you mentioned earlier, that maybe your SRI and SMI are testing what you're teaching, whereas the standard test you're taking are not testing what you're teaching?
That's possible, yeah. Or the test is totally different.
Well, I, I, I think that's the main thing, the main way to explain it.
Yeah, I, I think that the level of difficulty between the two tests, uh, is, it's a wide gap there, is what I think. Um, but I, I, you know, I don't know. And then we are doing System 44, and System 44 is more for our special needs students. It's a reading program. It's body-based. Um, the computer, uh, generated, uh, pretty much all of it. And then we are doing frequent assessment. They assess our kids at least once a month to see what level of reading they are on. And we expect kids to move, you know, a reading level within that space of that month. And there, there's levels, what we call level readers, which are numbered by the alphabets. And your A, B, C, D may be kindergarten, uh, and E, four, four or more letters would be first grade. We have third graders right now that typically would start on the letter M that are actually reading on U. So, so they are really pre-readers. And, and it, you know, no, but we're, we're doing all this assessment, and the kids will even tell you what level they're on. They will tell you what level they need to be on, and they'll come up to you and say, "Miss Tony, I need to be tested. I think I'm ready to move up a level." You know, they're well aware of where they're at and where they need to be. So, I think that's a good thing. Now for our math. We are doing number talks in grades K through five. Number talks is where, just what it means, you talk about numbers. You talk about how to put numbers together, how to break numbers apart, how different ways to solve things. And you see things on the internet all the time about, uh, "This is the kind of math my student brought home," and all, all this. Most of that's not true. We teach the regular way of doing math that we've done all of our lives, your old life, my life, and theirs. But we also teach them that there's other ways to do math problems. There's other ways to add and subtract, that some kids who may not learn the original algorithm, uh, may be able to grasp and, and do and be fine with it. And I know that, uh, in fifth grade, they do something called lattice, uh, with multiplication and adding, subtract. I don't really understand it, that the kids can do it and do it real well. Uh, I, you know...
Yeah, but it, it's a system though. I, I've done it with my kids. It's a system where you can solve a problem using it. But if you try to use that on a time-based test, it's not going to happen.
Smart balance is not time-based. They take all day long.
What's that?
They can take all day long.
It's not going to be that way when they hit college. It's not going to be that way in the real world. So, I'm glad to hear you say that we're, we're teaching the normal way to do math with these as additive methods because it wasn't that way when my kids, my younger two, or my older two came through. Because these were the methods they were taught and I had to teach them to do real math. And it was really frustrating because the lattice method...
It gets really frustrating, but what we're trying to do is just provide them with different ways. I would, when I taught, I would tell my second graders when I taught math, "There's always more than one way to skin a cat. There's more than one way to work a problem, more than one way to write a problem, more than one way to solve a problem." And we would do every way that you could possibly do to do those problems. I said, "You can do a model," and we would use cubes and, and tin strips and stuff. And I said, "That's a model." I said, "Then you can do a picture," and I'd go to the board and draw a picture of it. And then I would say, "This is what it will look like if you just use numbers that are written down, and this is how you will solve it." You know, so, you teach them all different ways, and they will use the way that works best for the...
Right, because different methods work for different people.
Yes. And like I said, we are a, a pilot school for Eureka Math this year. And, uh, Mr. McPhie has said when they come through and do their walkthrough, and we have one scheduled, I think, around the first of October, they want to see the Eureka Math being done. We are working on prob, oh, I see if I can get this back. We are working on problem solving. Um, several math teachers have, they have gone online, and they are pulling performance tasks from the internet and working with their students regarding the performance task because last year that was a real, real weakness. And what they do with these performance tasks is you may have six different problems within one working problem. Uh, I, I know somebody said that they were building a walking trail, and they had to put a water fountain so many meters apart. And then they had to put, uh, a bench so many yards from one another. And those kids would have to convert to, to do all that, and it was just, they really struggled with it. So, we're, we're pulling from, from the internet some that are out there, and we're using those to try to help shore up that area. We are placing the emphasis on our next generation standards rather than relying solely on our textbook. So, we are u- using the textbook, we're using Eureka Math, we're using performance tasks, uh, and we are using number talks. I don't know anything else that we can do. That is all that I know at this point in time that we can do to try to shore up that. We've done all the research. We've looked at everything. From, from what I hear from our teachers, the, the Eureka Math is really working well. The problem solving, we've got a flex group that flexes one period a day that are working on breaking problems down. And I think a lot of what, what the issue is with this math is they can read it, they don't have a clue what it's asking them to do. And, and until we can get them to where they can read it and know how to break that problem down, I, I think that that's one of our biggest weaknesses. So, we're working on that as well.
And a neutral we have is the intermission assessment, too, that we'll talk about on Thursday in the rest of the office.
And I think those are going to be ready in October or now? Okay, good. All right, let me see our math. Skip me back. Now, another thing that we're, we're doing this year is we're working on motivating. Because I, I do think, we're going to do, I do think that a lot of our students are not motivated enough. We're going to do a celebration ceremony every night of weeks. The teachers are doing Student of the Week. Uh, we're going to have an honors table for lunch. We're going to celebrate student gains on the smarter, uh, the SMI and the SRI as well as nibbles. Nibbles is what we use in kindergarten, first, second, and third. It's a reading test that they take three times a year also. So, um, any time that they have games, we want to celebrate that. We're going to have Leadership Day. We have a leadership class. We're having student mentors, and we're using gift cards as an incentive for attendance. This year, we started doing something else with attendance. We were having problems with kids coming to class late. So, I told them, I said, "Well, they come three times late. Put them in detention." Guess what? Well, everybody already left the class now.
Pick that one up.
Oh, yeah. That was an easy solve. So, we're doing all that, trying, trying to get them motivated. I don't know what this is doing tonight. It's definitely not doing what I want it to do. Okay, innovative programs and practices. We are doing FOS, which is a science program. They have FOS kits. Shayla Pritchard, our fifth grade teacher, has had training, extensive training on the FOS materials. We've ordered a FOS kit for third grade, fourth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And it comes with everything you need in it to teach, uh, a specific subject in science. And then, um, the guy, the guy that's over that program in West Virginia has offered to come and train us and is going to, um, hopefully allow us to check out other FOS kits. Uh, Kim, have you gotten yours yet? Is she here? She just stood outside. I think so. We are doing Lucy Cawkins Reading, which is, uh, the reading program used in, in New York. And she is at Columbia University, and she is considered the guru of reading in the United States. Um, her reading and writing, we did both of those programs. And, um, then we do emissions. Emissions, we work through Willing-Jaswick College, and the emissions are done through Skype. There's a professor up there, and, um, I think I told you all last year about the volcano one. A volcano erupted in an area that had lots of islands, and the kids had to figure out how they could save as many people as they possibly could, how they could evacuate them, uh, and they'd only had like so many buses and so many planes and, and everything. And they were going around the room and, and just, uh, busy as little beavers. And one little girl looked at me and she said, "This is stressful." So, so they really learned a lot out of that. Then we do a reading one that is, um, DNA. It's in conjunction with science, and that's in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. Each of these emissions that we do costs $400 per class, not per grade, per class that we do. So, we use student activity money from our, um, wedding money to purchase those. And this year, we are going to start, uh, a microsociety in our school. Uh, we researched it, and it's going to be held during our flex period. What microsociety is, is, is you have a society within the school. You have police officers, students who are police officers, lawyers, um, magistrates. You have the courts, whole court system. You have a president, a vice president. You have a cabinet. Uh, you can have a senate. It's however you want to set it up. You pay kids in fake school money to come to school and to work. And in our society, there is no welfare. Everybody must have a job. They, um, will have opportunities to use that money to purchase real things, which I will use student activity money to, uh, go to Walmart, purchase some items for them to buy and have an auction. There'll be a bank. They'll learn how to write checks. They'll have a savings account. They'll learn how to save money. They will pay taxes. So, we will also have an IRS, and they'll be able to have businesses. So, it's everything within our society brought down to the school level. And I think, we did it once before when we were eight and a year. And what the kids learned was just unbelievable. And our most suc- successful child, who ended up with the most money, was an LDC.
Where does this take place, Spark?
It takes place during the flex period. Flex period is a period that we have that we typically can do retaching with. It's when they have Spanish, when they have band. We have to offer Spanish. We have to offer band. So, you have to have that period. But for the other students that are not in Spanish and band, we felt like that they look at it as a free period. So, we wanted it to be beneficial to them to where they're going to learn some life skills.
To me, that is very, very...
And, um, I think it's fantastic. We're going to talk to the band. We're, we're hoping to have it up and running. October first is hopefully our start date. We have to do some teaching to the kids before they, they are ready to start. They have to apply for a job. They have to write a resume. And they have to, they're going to be taught how to dress appropriately for the job. So, on the day that we have interviews for the jobs, they will come to school dressed appropriately. They will have their resume and their job applications and know what, uh, they're applying for. We've just got, we've got to have one more meeting, and we're going to have that within the next, hopefully next week, where we're going to sit down and actually plan who's going to do what. Uh, our teachers haven't chosen yet what area they want to focus on. So, we'll have that up and running, I'm sure, in October. But, um, I think it's wonderful. I remember, uh, my daughter and my son both, when they opened their checking accounts, they went through the Microsoft Society program when we had the day-to-day. When they opened their checking accounts, I said, "Okay, sit down there and let me show you how to buy a check." They said, "Well, Mom, I already know how to do that. I learned that in microsociety." So, um, we hope that the bank will provide us with blank checks like they did before. And this was back in the nineties when we did this. But that, the bank at that time provided us with blank checks, provided us with savings account books, and everything that we needed to start a banking system and for the kids to use checks and savings. Now, there's some schools now that do a debit card, but I don't know how they do it. And I'm going to have to do some research to find out because, you know, debit cards, nobody writes checks anymore. But still, yeah, it's a skill that they need to know. And they need to know, if you get a ticket, where do you go to pay that ticket? And, uh, so we will have police, what I call peacekeepers. And we will have peacekeepers on duty, and if a child is running in the hall, go get a ticket. And they will have to go to magistrate court and pay a fine, which takes money away from them. So, you know, just like in real life. All right, our facility needs. Uh, every year I say this, we need another custodian. Three custodians, it's almost impossible for the teachers' school, as clean as it seems to be. And I, I, I think, I'd like for you all to really consider that. We need a set of leechers for our football field. Uh, we don't have, people have to bring the chairs to sit in, and when you sit down on the ground, like football games, as you know, and they're... And when you sit down on the ground, like football games, as you know, when they're playing football, you don't see all the action. You need to be up a little higher. We can get a set for about twenty thousand dollars that will meet our needs. And, uh, I would ask if there's any money that you all can come up with. We appreciate it. I'm going to send letters to, uh, the legislature this year and ask them for some money and see if, um, they may be able to fund a part of it. But we're in dire need for some leechers. As you know, we have to share a football field with softball and baseball. And, um, it gets to me pretty hectic at times. But we're the only school in the county that does not have leechers for the football games. And I, I think we would have much more participation in our football program if we could provide more forums. Last year, we had to buy all new equipment. Everything was just, I don't know what happened to it. We had bought new equipment, all new uniforms, it cost us ten thousand dollars to outfit our football team. And so this year, we're trying to stay with our head above water financially with the football money. It's difficult when you don't have that many people come out.
How many kids do you have?
We have about fifteen. And they won their first game in three years last Thursday night. So I'm, I'm really, really proud of that. We were supposed to play dune ball this Thursday night and I called them and I said, "Kim, we can't play dune ball." You all have heard of dunes? Because they're just not to the level that dune ball is. And dune ball rolled over Hamlin. And I said, "Hamlin will roll over us." She said, "Oh, God." And he said, "It must be bad." So she got another game scheduled, proposed day night instead of us. Thank God, I'm glad she worked with you on it.
Maybe if some of them haven't quit, there were twenty-three of them last year.
Yeah, but I think some of them have quit. We had one girl. We had one girl who starts.
Good. What about now, does your soccer team?
We don't have a soccer team. We didn't have enough interest.
That's what I wondered, if anything was taken away from you.
No, we, we don't have a soccer team. And we would have had one, but we just didn't have, have enough interest in it. We have enough interest, however, for volleyball teams. We had, when, when we did the, the survey of our kids, we asked about volleyball as well. And we've got everything we need for volleyball. We don't need anything. We've got the nets, the lines are drawn on the gym floor, the whole thing. And we'd really like to consider starting a volleyball team.
But did the other schools have volleyball?
Uh, not in the county.
Just high school?
Just high school. But there's other middle schools that do have volleyball teams.
How about freshman, is that something?
Well, we finally got the mats in. We couldn't do anything the past two years because we didn't have mats. They were going to cost so much. And somebody found them that they've been used for a tournament, big tournament. And they offered at Lincoln County. And I think every school bought them, did in a middle school. So every middle school now has mats. We had a coach and weren't ready to go this year during the freshman season.
What about, uh, softball, baseball?
Softball, we are at the top of, of the food chain on softball.
So what, active?
Yes, yes. And we've won the Cardinal, not Cardinal.
Black Diamond.
We are in the Black Diamond Conference. And we won it year before last. Last year, I think we were second place. And we have a real strong softball team.
How about basketball, do you play that?
Uh, basketball, we're in a downward swing. Now, in about two more years, we have a group of kids coming through that are really going to do well in basketball. But this, uh, this, this last year, this year, and probably next year, is just going to be growing years. And you have those. You can't be at the top every year unless you're manning.
There's still a lot of interest there.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Always interest there.
I thought you were.
Yeah. And we, I tell you this every year too. We need more technology integration specialists. We have two guys trying to do the entire county and it's not working. I mean, we may go come on and not see one of them. I've got a new computer sitting in my office waiting for them to come and hook up. I don't know when they'll be here. And they do the best they can. They can't service every school. It's just impossible. There's too many needs technology-wise for them to service every school in the county. And I feel sorry for them.
Does Reese have you in the van?
I don't know.
We do have a break there, so maybe we should.
Now Keith comes occasionally. When we put a work order in that is not within the realm of what Sean and Dane can do, they will send it on to Reese and Keith will come. More in repairing computers. But, but just the everyday running of the system. And every time we have the lights flicker, internet goes off. So Melinda has learned how to reset the internet.
Most of the time.
Most of the time. Uh, and so she will go and reset that for us. But it's just, it's difficult to do all the technology stuff when you don't have anybody in the building to support. And that technology is where everything's going right.
Just doing the updates. Now, they, they have so many and you have to keep the computers updated. And that alone is.
I thought they were able to do some of that at the county level now?
They can, remotely in, and do some things. But there's nothing like having that one body, uh, in the building.
It's still, they're having to do it for all of the county, even if they are at central office or whatever. It's still time consuming and it takes a lot.
It's just an impossible task for two people. Now, the high school has great gossip. But the other, uh, the two, John and Dane, they do the rest of the county. And just can't get it all done. I think they put in, made four or five new labs last year. Well, that takes time. Putting in new labs in the school. And when they're doing that, they can't be anyplace else if you've got them.
There's always something wrong somewhere.
The state really needs, and, and this is not so much your problem as it is the state's problem. I think the state needs to give us more funding for technology people. And, uh, I, 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 I don't know how to go about lobbying for that, but I would definitely like to do so. But, um, it needs to be in a school-wide format. Was Lincoln County one that got shorted money?
No.
I knew, why did I know that?
Not very much.
Well, if they ever enforced the requisition. You know, Kinnon County, well, I think I read it, like they're sitting on a two-hundred-and-forty-six million dollar surplus. Yeah.
They got shorted five and a half billion dollars.
Oh, yeah. Think what we could do with that money.
Oh, I, think a lot.
They don't need it. They need it to be shorted.
You probably could be convinced then.
Oh, I know you could. Other programs that we have, we have a nutritionist from Marshall University that comes once a week and works with our kindergarten through second grade. And they're going to be building, um, gardens this year, planting gardens. We're going to build lots of, and they're going to be doing everything related to that. And we're going to be able to eat the food that they grow. We have the WBU Extension Agent, Sherry Flynn, who comes and watches the third, fourth, and fifth on health. And we do jump rope for hard. And we do, uh, what's called a jam and minute. Where kids, all of us in the classroom, they get up and they stand for a minute and sit back then work. So we're doing some things for health as well.
Do you have room here on campus for a, uh, device? It's called a high ton. That, uh, you can grow, uh, vegetables in any, any.
Go outside?
Yeah, it's outside.
Yeah, we can have place.
Uh, yeah, when you want to alter the extension age, you can get those, uh, no charge. You can get, I think, up to three thousand dollars for installation. You have to have a water source, which you have.
Yeah.
And, uh, a lot of farmers around the county, you can see these things going up everywhere. What do we call it?
A high ton.
It's not exactly a greenhouse, but it's similar.
I want, I want that.
Contact the extension agent. And I'm sure he can give you all the details on it. He might be able to work that into their script.
He might be. School safety. Uh, I think you all probably are aware of the Alice program where they're changing how we do lockdown procedures. We've got person trained now in the county. And I'm contacting him to set up training for our staff so that, uh, we can practice lockdown. The fire marshal was here last week and he helped me hold off on our lockdowns until we had the training. Because he prefers to do that kind of lockdown rather than what we get him doing, which was sheltering place. So, uh, several of the schools have already had their trainings, but I think every school is going to that. I think that's something that we adopt. And, um, we are working with Dana to do a new drop-off and pickup for parents. There's a road behind the school. It's already built. There's a road that starts down here at the little church and comes up to the school. So we wouldn't be out a lot of money. The only thing we would have to do is purchase a couple of gates and move the playground fence and move a building. And we could have parents come in that way, come this way, drop their kids off here at the cafeteria in the mornings, pick their kids up here in the cafeteria in the evenings. And then they, we will have an automatic gate right here that we will just push a button when the red, the buses have gone. The buses will still load in front. And once we open the gate, once they've got their child in the car, they can go on out the gate and circle around this way and exit, uh, the school property. And the reason that we're doing that is because we have a huge safety issue. I had cops here this evening. They were, um, blocking the entrance, the entrance down there to keep people from trying to exit out that way. And they want to try to pass each other. There's, there's room for them to pass. But that's very much a safety issue. Not only do they want to pass one another, in the mornings, they want to even pass the buses. So we feel that if we make a different path for them to where they're not lined up out on Route 10. One morning, I was one minute late coming to school. And I was stopped on Route 10, past the bank, with people lined, parents lined up to drop their children off. And, and our staff, if they, the buses get here usually five minutes before the staff is even supposed to be on duty. And they come and they sit out there with their kids, sometimes ten minutes. Now, why they do that, I'm not getting into the bus driver issue at all. I'm just saying, that's what they do. And it makes it difficult at times for people to get in and get out, especially when we have handicapped staff that needs to park out here in front because you've got these buses sitting there. And I told them, "Do not, absolutely do not pass one of those buses to get into parking."
So the buses keep, the bus drivers keep the children on the bus?
Mm-hmm. It's better than what they were doing, that we're stopping up in our big hearts and parking the kids on the buses. But, but like, but like I said, we don't want to go there with that. We'll, we'll deal with that.
Well, I don't know, maybe we do, maybe we go there.
We, we need, we need though to work on getting this out here. And Dana says that he has the money to do it.
Would all the parents then be required to go this way?
Yes.
That's the only way they could get the kids to do it that way? It's worth exploring, it looks like.
Yeah, David's been up and looked at it.
David only use that for morning drop-offs and evening pickups.
Yes.
Right.
Now, if they came during the middle of the day, they would come out in front.
If I'm going to get in this line, I'm just wondering if I was a parent, if I was, "Well, I don't want to do that. I'm going to go out here and get mine into customary play."
I'll have the deputies out there for a few evenings. That'll, that'll stop them.
You have a plan?
I always have a plan. It may not work, but I've got a plan. But, um, we feel that that is, is one of our biggest issues right now, with school safety is our dropping off and picking up in the evenings. And we will, one thing we have, we have to make sure on this is that we don't have any children out on the playground at that time. So if we just do it for the morning drop-off and the evening pickup, there's not any children out there. Because, uh, we want everything to be, to run smoothly and safely. Plus, when you go from here all the way back down to that road, you can line up a lot of cars. A lot more than what you're lining up out here and then being on Route 10. And that's a hazard itself, them having to stop on Route 10 because they can't get into the, uh, the line. So I've already called with Dana and he says he thinks he has the money to do it because it's not going to cost hardly anything, just for the, uh, a little bit of fencing and two gates.
Did you say you're going to have a grata frame here?
Right here.
Exactly where is this frame?
It's out there. It's a brick road.
We can't see it from the brush, is that?
No, you can't see it because they made it to where the grass would grow up and cover.
Paper. Oh, paper?
Yeah.
And how much, how much of a drop-off do you have down to the road? I'm, I'm trying to figure out how you're going to clear everything off of parents bringing kids.
The road doesn't start, she's on the road right there.
Oh, okay, I follow you there.
And what we're going to do when we get started is we're going to, um, put stakes and like a little rope to guide them to where they need to go so they will.
I was thinking the road was down beyond that fence.
Oh, no, no. The road is right out here.
Oh, I understand.
And, uh, it would be an easy fix.
Were you in the middle of the road?
Yes, I was in the middle of the road.
Couple feet from the door?
Yeah.
Six feet, seven, it's through the road.
And, uh, we think it will work and, uh, we think it will cut down on our safety problems tremendously.
And you're going to have a, uh, school personnel there at the door letting them in?
There'll be school personnel in here as well as the door is. Our school personnel actually open the car doors for the children every morning when they come, when they get to the point where it's, uh, for them to get out of the car. Those will open the car.
That's why I was getting that, you can have the kid getting down, down here.
We will have school personnel there. And we'll take, we'll take care of all of that. And I think it will be ten times, hundred times more safer than what we've got right now. Because God forbid we get a kid hurt out here whose parents have dropped them off and they're running into front of us.
So I couldn't let my kid off down this way a little bit and then I walk on up here.
No, no.
They'd have to get out right here.
Yeah, and we've got to train on that. Most of them.
Some were harder to train.
Yes, some are. But um, we also keep our doors locked. Uh, and they have to come into the uh, man trap out there before they're allowed into the building. And we have the system where we can, if we don't know them, we can check their uh, driver's license and put the driver's license in the slot outside, and it will tell us if they've got anything outstanding against them. So uh, we're, we're doing a lot with, with safety, pardon?
Do background checks based on driver's license?
Yeah, pretty much. But I think it checks more for sex offenders though than anything. Um, but we're, we're doing everything we can, and like I said, our biggest concern right now is uh, the new drop-off and getting the Alice program started. Cause you know, you think it's never gonna happen in your community, but it could happen tomorrow. You just never know. This world today is pretty bad. And that's all I've got. I'll leave you with our smiley face. Do you have any questions? I hope I answered all of what you had.
I think so. I just want to think, cameras in your school, do you have cameras? Do I turn them on?
But we do have areas of need.
Well, how many cameras do you have?
About thirty-six.
Is there a central location where you can see what's going on on all those cameras?
My office, the president's office, and the secretary's office.
Okay, now, when you look at those, can I see all thirty-six of those at the same time?
You can see them, but you really can't.
They are sort of split. They're separated in outside cameras, inside cameras, you just flip. But, but there are areas that we need.
I just want to concentrate on the thirty-six you have. I'm trying to, not just here, but in other places too. Whether there's a central location that one can see all of the cameras that you do have. Identify one to uh, something gets my interest, I could click on one, bring it up, make it larger.
Yes, yes.
Well, if one of them goes out, do you know it immediately? If one of the cameras is not working?
If one of the cameras is not working, typically what has happened is someone has stolen the IP address.
Well, but I think what he said, if I didn't watch.
You know it, yes. Cause it's black.
It just, nothing shows up.
And there have been times when they all went out, well, not all of them, but all of them, about six or eight have went out. And it's because someone is stealing what, now, this is what Sean and Dana tell me, someone is stealing the IP address. And when they take that IP address, they decide to that camera, um, the camera will not work until Greg comes and gives it another IP address. And Greg has to be one to come and do that.
If you all would know, if somebody was monitoring these thirty-six cameras, I would know if a couple of them are out.
Oh, yes.
So I could report it to Dana or whoever. Okay, one thing else you want? Nice job. Thank you, Debbie. I appreciate that. I, I know you guys are working hard, and you know better than we the things that you have at your school, and you have a plan to address them, so good luck. Try to help these kids.
I just get so upset over those test scores. We've cried, we've uh, we've done everything. You know, we've done everything we know to do and are doing. But I, I have faith because I know that this is a great staff, and I know that they will get the job done.
I have a follow-up question, and that is following up on what I briefly asked about cameras. Do you all use them? Do you find them beneficial? How do you use them day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month?
We use them quite frequently, actually. Um, let's say there's a fight in the hallway. They're not in the classrooms, but if there's something that goes on in the hallway, all we have is full camera and watching. And you could tell these kids, oh, I'm gonna full camera and watch it, or they're cutting and cutting anything. Uh, who usually pick truth out of them that, that way. But yes, we've watched the videos quite often. Um, there's other instances where we've watched them. We just watched it here lately about a teacher bringing a child down the hall. Mother said the teacher had dragged the kid by the heels, kicking and screaming. And we watched the video, none of that was true. And it was clear.
How far back does everyone go, sixty?
It goes about thirty days, and then it loops over and erases everything. So we can go, we can go back that far. And uh, but we use it a lot for discipline, just like we use the bus camp videos. And that's the biggest thing. Now, we've had some incidents happen after school. And we're going to have to sit down and watch some of them during the evenings. We've had some things go missing in a classroom, and we need to find out who's been going.
Do these go twenty-four hours a day?
They, no, they actually go by movement. That's like if there's no one out in the hallway, but it's not video or anything.
What would I look at in this screen? What would I see?
You would see the hallway.
It just wouldn't show anything at the time.
It wouldn't show anything happening.
It would be just like blue, so nothing.
See, we thought, when we first got the system, Linda and I would watch it, and we would find that there were some time gaps between the time we start watching it and the time we end, and in between, there may be a time gap. It wasn't until we were told that if there's no movement, it does video. But we do have a few places where we need to put some more cameras. We need cameras in our stairwells. Uh, tech.
And we don't have them in the classrooms.
But, don't have them in the classrooms or the bathrooms.
But we do have them in the computer lab now.
Would you like to have them in classrooms? That's a, that, that's a debate. It's one of the things that some people want, some people don't. What's your thoughts on it?
My thoughts on it with the staff that we've got, it wouldn't bother me one bit for them to be in the classroom.
I was just getting ready, you stole one of my thunder here, that's what.
I'm sorry.
I was just getting ready. How many teachers are out here? How many would, how many would favor cameras in the classroom? I'm a former teacher, of course, and I would have, I would have loved that.
If there's any questions asked, then, you know, I think it covers you. Sometimes, you know, you have kids say one thing.
Exactly. And it's for your picture protection.
It's for your protection, as it is.
But we do need them in the stairwell. I don't understand.
I don't understand why they built this building and did not put them in the stairwells, two of your most important places. Yeah, they did, they didn't put any on our playground. There's none outside that points to the playground.
Or we can't park in the lot.
Watch anything there.
Have any instances with your camera where it looks, or appears that they're working, they're operating okay, but they're not, it turns out that for some reason they're not recording? Does that ever happen?
No. We've never had an instance of that. Now, if they're, if they're not recording, it's typically because the internet's down or um, electricity's off, which the internet's down then too, and/or someone has taken the IP address. And I, 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 I don't think to know a lot about technology, but I don't understand why we can't assign an IP address and it remain with that camera to where someone else can't piggyback on it. I don't understand that.
Is it, you're understanding, is this a security breach, or does someone else within the?
It's my understanding, and I may be wrong on this, but it's my understanding it's more a security breach. It's uh, kids hacking in. And I was told yesterday, we went to a training at RISA, and we were told that there is an app out now to where kids can get past any firewall that's out there. And the kids will get past that firewall and get, try to get online here using their phones. Well, the minute they get online and use their phone, if that IP address that they're using is connected to our cameras, it does. And there's, there's no way to monitor all of that. That's, that's impossible.
Debbie, is, there isn't general wireless access available in the building, or is there?
Not for students. The only wireless.
I mean, a child should not have a phone in this building at any point in time today. There's cell phone service here. Why would they want you to have a calculator? Apps on the phone for peak interferences?
We don't allow phones. We've had them, we confiscated them and they're gone for two weeks, first time. Second time they're gone for a year, that's our policy, we see the phone and review.
Now, we have, you know, if they need cameras, we will provide whatever technology they need for classroom or whatever, we can provide it for them.
What I'm saying, though, if it seems to me that if it's a student here hacking the system, trying to get the IP addresses, it's gonna be pretty easy to catch that student, there's no reason to have a phone. I live in a range, there's no internet service. Oh, you cell phone service there, right?
There'd be shops that come in and try to slip them by.
That's what I'm saying, though, if you see a child here with a phone, there's no good purpose for it.
No, oh, no. I agree, there's an option. And we, we have issues all, uh, all the time. Now, I don't think we've confiscated any this year, have we?
No. There was just that one little boy that brought the one that wasn't working. Kindergarten, and a parent.
Somebody's always gonna have something.
Now, with the app that she's talking about, if the app is running on the phone and say the phone's in the backpack in the locker, if the app is on, it'll automatically search. Just like if you have, if you have an app, just like say you turn on the calculator. If it stays on, you're on your phone. They could have been using the app at home. If the phone's in their backpack, it'll automatically search for that.
Just like it's very certain, just like your phone's searching for Wi-Fi.
It'll automatically search, so whether they actually have it out or not, that phone is still searching for it even though it's sitting in a backpack, in a locker, in a locker.
So pretty much, though, if you have a camera that goes down during the day, and you find out the IP address has been hacked, somebody here has a phone, taking it down nine times out of ten, or maybe?
Nine times out of ten, that's what's happening.
And how often does that happen? I mean, is it something to be concerned about? In terms of breaching the security that's provided by the cameras?
I, I don't think so. It, it doesn't happen all that often, but it does happen.
Okay.
Like I said, we dealt with it particularly last year. Shane, uh, Dana and Sean are here. At a particular time, we knew some kids had phones, and we were able to address it then and call them out on it. And after that, and we took a few for the two weeks, it became much less of a problem.
If you're monitoring, looking at this central monitor of all thirty-six cameras, and one of them goes out, then you'd know that maybe I need to be looking for something.
Yes.
All right.
That's like an England haystack sometimes.
Well, but once again, apparently it's not.
Well, Debbie nor I can look and see who's, like, they have access to where they can look and see who's signed on to it. Debbie and I don't have that ability. We can just see that the camera's down.
Well, I know, but that's what I wanted. My question originally, if you have thirty-six cameras, can you look at all of those different cameras at the same time? Now, if one of them's not down, or it goes down, then you can address why, but I just wanted to see if you could see them all at one time.
Yes, you can. And with, actually, last year when they, we called these kids in the office with Sean and Dana, they said, um, somebody says Paige's iPhone's been on the system. Now, they about died when they said that. They got real concerned, real quick. And uh, one of them just reached down in their boot, pulled their phone out, said, here's one. I said, well, you know the rules. She, they said, yeah, it's gone for two weeks.
Yeah, they didn't want to see us either, or something like that.
Oh, yeah. But like I said, usually when you confront them with stuff like that, most of them will cave in and come forward.
Sad thing is, the boot that it was in, it was the other child's phone.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was not the child's phone who gave it up.
That's why I was giving up so easily.
Oh, yes, yes. Sad thing about it is, come to find out later, she had her phone also hidden in the boot, but she gave the other child's. She was smart.
Probably, probably been working on math.
There you go, there you go.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Lot of good information. Okay, uh, let's go ahead then, let's move to our administrative item, Mr. Smith. Dana Smith is gonna be with us tonight, so we can strike him from the agenda, make these one dresses the next time. Just make it twenty-nine. Okay, all right. Let's have a motion in to the administrative items, please. Mr. Curry?
Say.
I'm Mr. Wilkerson.
Item A, approval of post-one new teaching position effective immediately due to an unexpected increase in student population for special education at New Ball PKA. Item B, agreements with the following supervisory aims for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year in accordance with provisions of West Virginia Code eighteen A dash five dash eight. Item C is adoption of resolution declaring the week September the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen is West Virginia Association of Retired School Employees Week. Item D, approval of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen staff development plan for professional employees. See the attachment? Item E, designation of the following employees to provide specialized healthcare for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. Item F, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus staff drugs for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item G, contract listed given to provide staff development and onsite technical assistance to administer the West Virginia Alternative Assessment for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year according to the terms of the agreement. See the attachment, and it's funded through special education. Item H is out of tra, out of state travel for the following personnel. Kirk King, Johnny Atkins, Don Davis, and Cameron Pritchard are going to National Harbor, Maryland to attend the National Learning Forward Conference in December, funded through Title II. And Kirk King's going to Houston, Texas to attend the National Title I Conference in January, funded through Title I. Item I, to award a bid to Rick Epling-Pavy, the court grade totaling nine thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars for installation of a fifty-by-sixty basketball court for Harts PKA, funded through a state grant.
Okay, do you have any questions? If I need the administrative items? If not, then I'll call for questions. Is that all, yes, buddy?
Yes.
Okay, we go to the finance section, if you have a motion, please. I mean, Mr. Baker, or I think it's taken by Mr. Curry. Mr. Leble, you're on.
Item A, schedule of invoices totaling one million sixty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Item B, authorization to pay one thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents to bus operator Larry Christian to settle grievance. Docket number two-one, I'm sorry, T zero one-five dash one-five-seven-three dash L I N E D. Item C, authorization to pay one thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents to bus operator Johnny Harris to settle grievance, docket number two-zero-one-five-one-five-three-one dash L I N E D. Item D, a county pension for the following retired employees under Option A Plan paid from the county excess. for the following retired employees under option A plan paid from the county excess levy.
Any questions, Mr. Lemon? Come on. If not, then we'll call for questions. Is that an all yes vote on the finance? Any personnel, motion, please?
Item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment of substitute service personnel. Item C, employment of substitute service personnel pending completion of certification requirements of FBI slash CIB background clearance. Item D, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item E, reclassification of service personnel per West Virginia Code 18A dash four dash eight, ten, D. Item F, retirement and resignations. Underneath, abolish service position. Cook at Duval, we still had a time change there we needed to correct. And abolish extracurricular bus aid, a time change. Both of those will be reposted. And, and update, I gave you an update on the, laid it up there. Uh, it's the same as last week, last board meeting. We posted thirteen professional positions and did not have one certified person apply for anything.
And it's consistent with the position other counties are having across the state. They can't go positions unless they're going to certify a professional person.
So we did not. In what state did, was in, what categories did you say that was true? All of the ones shown here or the certain ones?
All these.
It was not one. Are you English? We don't, we can't get the certified English.
You look at elementary, we had an elementary at Midway. We didn't even have a certified applicant for that. People used to wait twenty years to get those jobs.
Oh, I know. You would think Midway would be apparently accessible.
Right, yeah. We didn't have a certified applicant.
Those other counties out there, fifteen, sixteen vacancies right now in the hall.
I heard one had forty vacancies. So this was discussed at the state school meeting. This high school, it was terrible.
Continue to post and we have some, uh, individuals are getting close to get, have some hours or get hired on first class permit, which means they have twenty-five percent of the coursework. And we're hoping we can get some of those people started and they can get in coursework and maybe try to grow around and keep them.
I've got an English teacher in that position that is working, um, to get twenty-five percent in. She should have it in by the end of December, as long as someone who is certified doesn't bid on the job. And she's from Harts and is doing an excellent job. I mean, just couldn't be more pleased with this girl.
That's good. You get people who are local, you can usually keep them.
You can usually keep them.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Lemon? All right, any questions in the personnel? Is that an all yes vote on all the personnel items?
Yes.
Okay, comments of concern, Mr. Mickey?
I saw you. We recognize the fact that September the, uh, 21st to the 25th is, uh, trying to think what the name of the law's called.
Barbs?
Yes, barbs. Uh, for our retired school employees, also want to note that on September the 25th, Governor Tomlin has declared that ser, school service employee that, across the state, there's a proclamation that we have and we're gonna send out, uh, to all of our principals. And we'll talk about Thursday, David.
Does that mean I have to honor our bus drops?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just kidding. Above all others. I invite them every year for our Christmas dinner, but they never come. We'll owe them.
Now, is that just for certain personnel or is it services, yeah, services believe that statewide, September, probably September 25th?
Because this is retired, we kind of count it, or statewide, so it must be tied that into that.
Our, our enrollment numbers are improving. The last conversation I had with Ford a couple weeks ago, we were down approximately at a hundred and twenty students. We, we are now around ninety. And we, we still have until October the eighth to officially submit our numbers. So I know we have, some of our schools are, have been enrolling students. Uh, I got an email today from Midway Elementary. They've enrolled a couple of those students today. So hopefully by the time we get to the, uh, submit date on October eighth, those numbers are, are gonna jump up. Maybe not as bad as it wants for our person.
Mr. Mickey, do you have a total of, some figure that would give some indication of the laws and people?
I've heard seven thousand. Well, the figure that Mrs. Dana's used for years is, uh, around five thousand dollars. I've heard it's anywhere from five thousand, sixty-five hundred dollars worth of those. Uh, so I, I usually use that sixty-five hundred dollar figure in my calculations. If it stays at ninety thousand, you're looking at five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, some good news to share with you, two of our new buses arrived this past week. Yes, as a matter of fact, this is, we were on our way to the teacher year ceremony last week and we passed the buses on the interstate and Britton said, I'll bet you that's our bus. And we got back the next day, we found out it was our buses. So two, two are, are being utilized right at the moment. And then we have, I think, two others that are going to be inspected.
Are those two on the road this first day?
That's, I understand, yes. And finally, uh, school building authority rep, Ben Ashley's gonna meet with me and Dana Smith tomorrow. We're gonna tour the Midway Elementary School. We're gonna look at property there at Smirka Mountain, it's property over Quarter G. And take a look at the property located at West Samuel Elementary as we continue to look at the possibility of submitting a needs project to the SBA on October 1st, 2016.
Next, next to you.
And I will give you a report. I'll bet you on, on that visit.
Mr. Ashley's never seen any of these locations, has he?
He has not. This is his first visit.
Anybody else have anything? All right, if not, then we'll adjourn for the day. Now, we're going to adjourn until September the 22nd at 3:00 PM. Uh, the board will meet in session for student disciplinary hearings on that day. And then we'll have our next regers scheduled immediately on the 29th. So the board will adjourn by September 22nd, 3:00 PM in County Austin. Motion, please. Mr. Wilkerson, second by Mr. Baker. Oh, yes?
Yes.